Okay, we are about to start. I believe we take roll call first.
Pledge of Allegiance.
We're, oh, it's a call to order first, sorry about that. Oh, the date today is June 27, 2018, and we will now say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberties and justice for all.
Awesome. Okay, and now we have roll call.
Chair Kevin Rooney.
Here.
Vice Chair Mario Maciel.
Here.
Commissioner Edwin Borcas.
Here.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher Seines.
But present.
All right. Now let's move on to public communications. Anyone wishing to speak on anything other than on the docket tonight, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes. No? Okay, seeing there's no one, public communications is now closed. This time, we have the consent calendar.
I move to approve the minutes from last meeting, June 13.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, approved. All right, now we have the new request, I believe. Is it Abraham's handling it, or?
Jonathan will be presenting this item.
Okay, Jonathan.
Hello, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience. The request before you is a request for consideration of a conditional use permit to allow the operation of used automobile sales within the IC industrial commercial zone.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. A request for consideration of a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of used automobile sales within the IC industrial commercial zone pursuant to the table 153-050-020 of the city's municipal code. The applicant, excuse me if I mispronounce this, Duan Huan Kiem, is proposing to establish a used automobile sales business. The property is located at 13409 Garvey Avenue. This is Unit 7 on the north side of Gary Avenue and west of the intersection of Garvey and Balden Park Boulevard. The site is rectangular in shape and contains approximately 54,865 square feet of lot area and is improved with one building with seven units, approximately 24,063 square feet. Unit 7 is 2,288 square feet. The site accommodates 49 parking stalls, including three handicap stalls with eight loading spaces. Unit 7 is allowed four stalls and has the ability to park cars being for sale within their unit. The proposed use is compatible with surrounding operations to the north, south, east, and west. However, the property, excuse me, the property, west are single-family residences which are buffered by the building itself. The auto sales are in Unit 7 of the building closest to the residences. Therefore, the planning staff has added conditions of approval to ensure the activities will not have an adverse impact on those properties. Condition 5 restricts the businesses, the business to specific hours of operation that are in compliance with the municipal code section referencing hours of operation. The business will operate between 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and Sunday by appointment only. Condition 2 states that the applicant is required to conduct automobile sales within the enclosed building at all times. Condition 3 prohibits the applicant from storing automobiles within the parking lot or driveway areas of the property during business hours and overnight. Staff has reviewed the application and operational characteristics and has determined that with the added conditions of approval, the proposed business will not have an adverse impact on the adjacent properties. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 1814 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Balden Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Conditional Use Permit to Allow the Operation of Used Automobile Sales Business Within the IC Industrial Commercial Zone pursuant to Table 153-050-020 in the city's municipal code." And this concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. We will now open to the public. If you wish to speak on this matter, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address. Anybody? No? All right. We will now close the public communications for this. Is there any questions from any of the Commissioners?
Is it at this property that there's already two conditional use permits? Do we feel that adding a third automobile sales to that same property would compromise, like, property or surrounding community in any way?
No, I don't believe so, just because the other two have mostly rentals. They do also have automobile sales, but they have rentals. This is exclusively automobile sales. And one of the other two has repairs.
Perfect.
And after, when we went posting there, he mainly does repairs, actually. So he does repairs, the other one is more rentals, and then this one is more sales. But they all have the ability to do automobile sales.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is also repairs?
No, this one is exclusively automobile sales.
Okay, awesome. Any more questions? All right, is there a motion to pass?
I'll make a motion to pass.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's, everyone says aye, so it passes. All right, next on the docket? If that's a correct pronunciation, docket.
Good evening, Chair, Members of the Commission. My name's Erica Ramirez, and I will be presenting to you Item 3 tonight. The case before you is a, for consideration, is the approval of a conditional use permit for the rental of a large construction equipment and storage facility within the IC zone. The location is actually made up of three parcels, 12905 Garvey, 12872 Bess, 12862 Bess, and the applicant is Sun State Equipment. The location of the proposed large equipment rental and storage is surrounded primarily by the IC zone, as you can see, but there is also open space zone adjoining, and there's residential across the street and the I-10 to the south. The surrounding uses are a little bit more varied. Here, there is a mobile home park. It also has open space. And then here, there's a single-family residence, and on this side, there's a multifamily residence. And then next door is the current Sun State property. The subject site is comprised of three parcels, as mentioned, for a total of 146,062 square feet, or 3.4 acres. It's important to note that even though the parcels are not tied, or nor is it part of the project, there is a condition which will require, if any changes occur to any one of the three parcels, that a modification to the CUP will need to be submitted to the The site is developed with a two-story warehouse and office building, which is 21,655 square feet and 16 parking spaces. This is the building, and these are the spaces. Those will remain as is. There's two landscaped areas, one here and one here. Those two will be required to comply with the city landscape requirements, so landscape plan will also be part of the requirements. This is the warehouse and office building. It will remain intact and be used as that by the proposed use. The screen wrought iron gate will replace the chain link fence here. This is where, beyond that point is where, this is looking from the Garvey side. After this point will be the storage area, so that will be replaced by the black fence here. Also, on the Bess side, there's a chain link fence, and that will also be replaced with this type of screened fencing. And this will help screen the storage from the public view, as required. The other two improvements that I would like to mention that are included in the conditions of approval are the replacement of the chain link that runs, let me go back here, sorry. There's a chain link that runs along here and here. We are requesting that the chain link that is here and here be replaced with a masonry wall, a minimum of six feet high. And the reason for that is, as mentioned, there are, even though it's not zone residential, there are residential uses in those areas. Here's the single-family, and then here's the multifamily. So we are requesting that wall. In addition, the areas that are going to be used for the outside storage will have to comply with the NPDES and maintain BPMs. This concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 1815 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Balden Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Conditional Use Permit to Allow Rental and Storage of Large Equipment Within the IC Industrial Commercial Zone pursuant to Table 153.050.020 in the city's municipal code. Location 12905 Garvey, 12872 Bess, and 12862 Bess Avenue. Case number CP 868. I'll be available for questions, and I believe the applicant is also present if you'd like to pose any questions to them. Thank you.
All right, we will now open this matter up to public hearing, so if you wish to speak, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Do any of the Commissioners have questions?
As a matter of fact, I do. Is Sun State planning to move all their equipment from where they're at now in the corner into this new facility that was owned by Steiny Corporation?
No.
No?
No.
So it's an extension, then, of what they're doing?
It's a new, it's a new use. So this is an entirely new application.
Okay. And the hours of operation, again, are?
Six to six.
Six to six, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. daily. They're open from the public from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, there is maintenance done late at night, or no? You said Sun State's here?
They are here.
Can they come up to the podium?
My name is Brad Baker. We do do maintenance in our existing facility into the evening, yes.
Okay. Would the noise be a problem in that area for the residents there in your?
The existing building, all of the bays that are open face, I believe it's Athol to the east. There's a hill.
There's a bridge, right?
We don't plan on moving any of our maintenance, our evening maintenance over into the new facility.
Oh, perfect.
We plan on keeping that into the existing facility.
Perfect, thank you. That was my main concern.
All right, are there any more questions from the Commissioners? Seeing none, do we have a motion to pass?
I'll make a motion to pass.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience. The request before you is a request for consideration of a tentative tract map to subdivide one lot into 10 lots to facilitate attached townhome condominiums, townhomes, and one common lot, a conditional use permit for an affordable dwelling unit, Unit Number 4, for a moderate income household, and a development plan to allow the construction of 10 residential, I'm sorry, attached townhomes within the R3 high-density residential zone pursuant to Tables 152.10 and 153.040.140.8 of the city's municipal code. Location is 3234 Fraser Street. The applicant is Balden Park Homes LLC. Case numbers TM 78214, CP 867, and PR 1741. The property, again, is zoned R3 and is currently improved with a church. Surrounding zones are also R3, and they consist of multiple family and residential uses. The applicant's request for a tentative tract map to subdivide one lot into 10 lots and one common lot to construct 10 attached condominium townhomes. The common lot consists of that which is not airspace units. The project is designed with each unit having its own driveway to a two-car garage with access from Dart Street. As a result of the elongated shape of the lot, the applicant was unable to reasonably provide common open space and guest parking. The 10 units are also divided into two buildings with five units each building, creating buildings that are longer than permitted by code. As a result of these design characteristics, the applicant is requesting concessions and has proposed that to designate Unit Number 4 as affordable for a moderate-income household. And one thing to note is a density bonus is not being requested as part of these incentives. The applicant's request for a conditional use permit to designate Unit Number 4 as affordable for a moderate-income first-time home buyer is in accordance with city code and state law. Let me move on here. The subject site is currently improved with a church, as I mentioned, and a parking lot, but is surrounded by multiple family residences and apartments. Therefore, this proposal will be compatible, being that it's a proposed residential. So it's compatible to surrounding area. The design, the site and building designs have been reviewed and tentatively approved by the design, by the city's Design Review Committee, pending Planning Commission approval. Building design and architecture include typical features such as gabled roofs, window moldings, window shutters, decorative rafter tails, and exterior veneers. The color scheme will include an earth and tone color pursuant to city's color ordinance. The project will consist of only one floor plan with a reverse variation of that floor plan. The livable floor area for each unit will be approximately 1,864 square feet. Each dwelling unit will have four bedrooms, and all units will have two and a half bathrooms. These are going to be two stories with, obviously, the attached two-car garage on the first See here, let me move that. Staff has reviewed the applications and has determined that approval of the project is compatible with surrounding areas and is in accordance with the goals and policies of the city's general plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 18-16 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Balden Park Approve in 1 a tentative tract map to subdivide one lot into 10 lots to facilitate attached condominium townhomes and one common lot pursuant to Table 152.10 of the city's municipal code. Two, a conditional use permit to allow the designation of one affordable unit for moderate income pursuant to Section 153.040.140.8 of the city's municipal code, and to request three concessions pursuant to Section 65915 of this California Government Code for increased building length, reduced common open space, and guest parking. And three, a development plan to allow the construction of 10 attached condominium townhome units, which includes one affordable dwelling unit, Unit Number 4, on property located within the R3 high-density residential zone pursuant to Section 153.040.140.2 of the city's municipal code. The location is 3234 Fraser Street. Applicant is Balden Park Homes LLC. Case numbers TM 78214, CP 867, and PR 17-41. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right, we will now open up the podium to public hearing. Anyone wishing to make a comment on this, please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Greg Roscoe. I live at 13113 Dart Street, which is just across the street from this church. My mother's lived there for 47 years. You're proposing 10 units directly across the street from four single-family homes in the same space that the church spaces. Forty years ago, I'm all in for progress and everything for Balden Park, but 40 years ago, we had 35 houses in this area. That's this 300 common space from the church. You guys built multiple apartments behind us, in front of us, around us. Now there's probably 500 apartments in that same space that there was 35 homes 40 years ago. There's no more space to be, put any more people there. The parking's atrocious. Right now, if you go there at 7:00 o'clock, every parking's taken from Tracy to Farro Grove, down Dart, all the way back around to the back houses. There's, there's four houses on Dart, there's three houses in the back, and it's definitely unfair for the people that live there. If you look at, if you bring up one of those pictures from before, yes, there's apartments everywhere in there now. But now, we're caved in, now we're trapped in with four houses there. We park in our driveway, in the, in the actual driveway itself, because when we come home at night, there's no parking on our street. There's no parking down the street. Friends that come over, and adding 10 driveways to this street is not going to work. We have people parking commercial vehicles there. We have people that work directly across the street where there's over 150 apartments there on Frasier, and they all park on this side, because there's no parking on Frasier in between Farro Grove and Waco. So adding 10 units, I see it just being, the four houses that are there, you guys are caving in on us as residents there. We've been here 47 years. The other residents have been 20 years plus in front of us around the corner on Finchley when they made the street open. 47 years ago, it was a dead end, the church and four houses. There's a house to the left of the church, behind the church itself, one house there, and there's one large home where there's 150 apartments there now. So two houses added 250 houses, and there was a large barn, if you've been around Balden Park that long, next to the dairy. Mr. Jones owned it. It was a large barn, and that created 250.
Your time is now up.
Okay. So I think 10 is a large number for that space. Half, half that space, I think, would be better used and kind of give us the space which we deserve as residents. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Craig Cook. I am going to speak on behalf of the applicant, Balden Park Homes. I totally understand the comments by the gentleman that lives across the street. We thought long and hard about this site. We've never had a site that's only 58 feet deep, you know, 450 feet long or 500 feet long, so it's a very unique site. It's zoned R20, so you can put 20 to the acre there, which would be 11.6 by code. We're only putting 10, and one of those is an affordable unit, so it really doesn't even count as far as the density is concerned. So really only putting nine there when we're allowed to put 11.6. So the density is much lower than we're required, and we're not even asking for a density bonus while we're, are providing affordable housing. We didn't do three-story. Everyone's doing three-story townhouses, three-story single-family detached. I've been in front of you guys with three or four different three-story townhouse projects. We saw the single-family houses across the street. We saw the apartments all over the place. We saw two-story houses next door, and we said, is there a way that we can do an attached development, a development that's mid-density, not 10 houses, you know, per acre, or 20 or 22 townhouses, but something that has a backyard? These all have 400-square-foot backyards, every one of them. Something that has a driveway and a garage. So instead of doing three guest parking spots like the code requires, we have 20 guest parking spots as far as the code is concerned, because we have the 10 driveways. We have the 10 garages that every townhouse is required to have, plus we have 10 driveways. So we have 40 parking spots for a townhouse development of 10 units, which is, usually it's 2.25 per unit, we're at four per unit, 2.5 per unit, just, you know, very good parking for attached projects. So I know, obviously, it's better when it's vacant across the street, it's better when no one's there, and I never thought about the concept of, when I put the driveways in and I put the additional parking in, you do reduce street parking, because the openings of the driveways do reduce it. But there's still probably eight or nine street parking spots in front of the development post when we would get done. But for every one you lost in the street, you gained two in each driveway. So it is, it is a net benefit, and I just feel like it's a, it's a really unique project. I've never done an attached two-story project before. Everything that people are doing with high-density now is three-story, and the minimum guest parking, and no one has a yard, all you have is a balcony, and these all have a 400-square-foot backyard. You can have a dog, you can have a barbecue, you have a driveway, you have a front yard, which, you know, this is a typical setback on these front yards, no different than track houses are done right now. So I know it's not the thing that we've all seen, and it looks like it has a pretty big footprint, but that's because we didn't go three-story, like everyone else is doing. And you got that living space on the first floor. Usually with these three-story developments, you're walking in, and then to get to the living room and the kitchen, you got to go up a flight of stairs. And this is going to be just like a house. It's going to be like an 18 square, you know, 1,800-square-foot house, where you walk in, and the living room and the dining room and the kitchen are on that first floor, and you've got a driveway, and you can go trick-or-treating and walk up to the door, just like a house, except they're a little closer together than normal. So I think it's a good development. I think, obviously, if you live across the street, nothing is better than something. But what could have been done here with the density bonuses and stuff like this? Most guys would have come in here and done 12, 13 units with an affordable house, and we've got 10, and they're a good size, and they've got four bedroom, and the affordable unit is identical to the market rate units, which is unique. Usually, it's a smaller unit. So I think it's a good development. I think it's not going to tower up over, like, the apartments and stuff around, and I think it's a fair compromise on not getting too dense. So if you guys have any questions at all, I'm available. I'll just sit right here if you guys want to call me back up.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else? All right, public hearing is now closed. Any questions by the Commissioners?
Chair Rooney, may I ask the first speaker at the podium to repeat his last name for us, for the record?
Rosscoe.
Rosscoe, O-R-O.
Mr. Chair, if I can add some comments?
Sure.
So before you, you'll see some photos. I've canvassed that area for three days, tried speaking to the residents in the area as much as I could. You'll see that the site, the current site's in a deplorable condition. It's, at least when I was there last night, there was a homeless lady feeding her cat in front of the church. There's trash everywhere in the church. It seems like there is an abandoned car on that lot. There is trash everywhere, broken windows, and so I printed these photos to bring to you. Something clearly has to be done, and in speaking with the residents that I... Something clearly has to be done, and in speaking with the residents that I spoke with, it was the general sense of, of support and approval to do something with that lot. I, I do share the same concerns about parking, because I, I live on a street very much like, very much like this street. I guess I live behind Superior, so there is, there are three homes on that street, and when I get home at night, there is zero parking. There is, you know, theoretically, two stretches of street that I could park on, and there is zero parking. I am surrounded by apartment complexes around the corner. So I do feel for, I do feel for the parking situation, and if you look at these photos, you'll also see the condition of parking. There is probably nowhere to park. And so that is certainly a concern, but I, I think that overall, the need to fix up this lot and the need to combat the housing crisis in California kind of justifies it. We're seeing something incredible. We're seeing, we're seeing four parking lots per home, and I know that we are constantly arguing about parking when we have these projects before us. So they're going above and beyond. I'm, I'm, but I'm certain that the parking on the street is still, it's, it's not going to solve the parking on the street, and I wish that we could come to some sort of compromise to, to work on that, because I certainly feel for everybody that lives on the street. You know, my wife will, you know, she'll come home in the afternoons from, you know, taking our son to the park, and can't find anywhere to park. So, so I certainly feel for it. But I brought these images to show you the condition of the lot and share with you the general comments that I received from everybody that I spoke with, and, and, and I hope that has, or at least you can receive my words and make something of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I, I feel for the, for you, because I've actually voted against twice two condominium projects going on. The one with the brick, the brick monument from Ballen Park, which they're keeping, they're building twenty-three units over there, they're building forty-eight next to Pacific over there for condominiums. Neither of them, I believe, are Mr. Cook's projects. And at the same time, as letting you know, I'd like to commend him, because four parkings per, you know, per residence is a lot, and that, that would take care of, that wouldn't affect the parking on the street, I don't believe. These other places, I remember the one on Pacific takes, they had fifteen guest parkings for forty-eight four-bedroom units, three- and four-bedroom units, and I asked them to change that. They made them smaller and made it into nineteen units, I mean nineteen spaces only. I still voted against it, but it passed. The same with the one over there. They only have five guest parkings with two per, two parkings per unit, and it's twenty-three units over there. So I feel with this ten units going up, I've dealt with Mr. Cook in the past on different houses, I believe off of Lante or La Sena, too. And just so you know, we check out, you know, the areas that are being done, and just to make sure everything's on the up and up, and I'm impressed with this. I'm, I'm actually happy with that, along with these pictures. In the past, I lived in Ballen Park since 1974, and I could tell you from experience, if that area goes undeveloped right there, the homeless are going to start breaking into the church. Not only that, they, they take dumps in there, and it's not in the restrooms. It's all over the place, just to let you, you know, from my experience of things. I've seen houses that sat too long, and, and kids from high school have high, break in and have parties there and leave in horrendous conditions. So I'd like to commend Mr. Cook on this, and, you know, it, it's just my opinion of everything that's going on. I vote against a lot of stuff that might be against, how do I say, against the city's values for trying to make it better because of the parking issues, but in this case, I feel that it won't hurt any of the residents around there for the parking issues, because four cars per resident is, is pretty accurate, adequate for what's going to be built there.
Mr. Chair, if I may add, also, I think, I think maybe one of the methods that we can employ to kind of mitigate this, this parking situation is that for these ten units that we're putting up, we have to include in the CCNR that they use their garage for parking. These units have to use their garages for parking and not park on the street. So in that sense, we, we do free up the nine spots, the nine spots that'll be available on the streets for, you know, other, other residents of the street. So I, I think that's something, I don't know if it's already included. I know that we've talked about it in other projects, but if we do go forward with this, that has to be a condition on the CCNR.
Commissioner, CCNRs are required as part of the conditions of approval for the, you know, as mentioned in the resolution. In fact, if you want detailed conditions to be added in the CCNRs, you can motion, if you decide to approve the item, you can motion with the added condition that, so just be sure to say that when you're reading the, the resolution, with the added condition that the CCNR should include a condition to require parking in, in the garages, that they're not being used for storage or anything like that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just want to give a copy of this to Esther for the record. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
These are pictures of the property that were taken by, by Commissioner Sands.
All right. Seeing no other-
Chair, I do have, I do have a concern. A resident stated that there's actually commercial vehicles being parked outside on the, on the street, and I think that also makes it unjust for our residents as far as parking Is there anything that could be done to make sure that there is no commercial vehicles being parked on a residential area like that?
And for clarification, are these commercial vehicles that are commercial, commercial rated, or are they vehicles that could be residential but are used for commercial purposes? I, there's no clarification on that?
Mr. Roscoe, would you mind coming up and stating?
Vehicles range from twenty, twenty-foot box trucks, local school buses that are used for Ballen Park Unified, a bus, tour bus, fifty-passenger tour bus, et cetera, et cetera, to a twenty-five-foot Big Tex car loader trailer. Everything that don't park on Frey, Farro Grove or on Fraser winds up on Dart or winds up on Finchley, and it takes up parking spaces. That's why I said there's commercial vehicles, there's all types of vehicles that are parked there, and you, you name it, on a weekend, there may be a, a box truck there for the whole weekend, because they're not working on the weekends, but they move it Monday through Friday, you know? But they are there, go by there anytime. I had one question regarding the pictures that were taken. They're taken recently, this week. This property is owned by somebody for the last eight months. Wasn't their responsibility to maintain the property? Because I have went over there and cut the lawn myself. I've trimmed around there. We, we swept the driveways, we blow, take the blower across the street and blow the sidewalks down. Shouldn't they be responsible to maintain this property while it's being developed? That's just a question for myself. You can answer it, not, it's fine. Thank you.
In response to the gentleman's question about the, or providing the information on the vehicles, the commercial vehicles, the vehicles that he described do sound like they're not supposed to be there. Really, there's nothing that I can think of that can be done to this project's condition to eliminate that problem. However, the applicant and, I mean, I'm sorry, the applicant, the, the resident and neighbors around there can actually call the police department to report any vehicles that are not supposed to be in that area.
Chair, Mr. Cook?
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to come back up. I've seen this condition a couple times before, where there's very few pace, places with long interrupted, uninterrupted curb, where there's no curb openings, and, because there's no houses there. Right now, there's only two curb openings for the parking lot, so you have areas of two, three-hundred feet of no curb openings where there's no houses. So what the truck drivers do, the car haulers, the bus guys, there are very few places to park, and they're coming off their shifts and coming off their work at two, three o'clock, when everyone else has not come back from work yet, and they like to hog all those long, straight stretches where they can come in and come and park. Though it is a negative that will lose some of the street parking, I think a lot of that will be solved when there's all those driveways in the future, when the new development, because they won't park and block someone's existing driveway. They come there because they have no curb openings for three-hundred feet, and they can park tractor trailers and trucks there. I've had this problem in commercial developments and residential developments, where we bought these big, empty, vacant lots that had no curb openings, and they would just, they find that sweet spot, they live in that neighborhood, and they come and park on those long things. I think a lot of that will be solved when there isn't uninterrupted, straight curb with no one being able to come out of their driveway or anything like that in the future. I don't think they'll have that problem, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to bring up, Chair. I know for a fact the apartment complex that Mr. Roscoe was talking about is overpopulated in the sense that there's more than a ton of cars that are parked on Fraser, all the way down. I mean, literally, all the way down almost to the Ten Freeway. My babysitter is on Magnum Street, which is just a street behind. Residents in that area, I know, keep their cars outside for the same reason, that there is no parking, so what they do is they'll hog up the spots outside just to make sure to save their spots for when they get home. So it is an issue, but like Chair, Chair Rooney said, it's something that's definitely going to beautify the city. More than likely, property home values will go up in that area, and that's the part I, I like to look at as a plus. I do see your concern in regards to the parking, and I do take that to note, but I think it's for the best of the community to put something beautiful in this spot that's currently looking like a dump, and that's it.
I just did one real quick thing, one of the residents reminded me of.
Just as I can, sir.
He can say it if you want.
Yeah, I'll allow him. Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, thank you. There's a new fee that's being presented to the apartment that are surrounding areas in the low-income areas that are there, that is causing a problem, that more cars are on the street as of recent months, because they implemented a parking fee inside the facilities. So now the residents don't want to pay the twenty-five-dollar additional parking fee, which, I don't know, was raised, or it was a twenty-five-dollar parking fee that they implemented. Now, all these cars are outside of their actual residence, so if that could be addressed or if that, 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 that could solve something there, but there is an additional fee that these low-income apartments that surround three sides of us, they implement it. So one of my neighbors that has both his cars on our street, he's, he's, don't want to park inside. So it was one of the things I did forget to mention. So, thank you.
Mr. Roscoe, before you leave, I would like to commend you for coming up and speaking, and I would recommend that you actually come to one of the council meetings and bring these points up there, so that you can address our mayor and the council members, so that they're aware of what's going on in our city. This particular fact that you just gave us is something that we're totally oblivious to unless we hear it from somebody who's out there actually experiencing it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for giving me additional time.
I commend you for coming up.
And like I said, I, I'm all in, in favor of Ballen Park progress, but you have four on one side, you have ten on the other side, and there's not enough space for five, you know? So I'm trying to make it, I understand the progress, but ten is a lot for that small space, because they're very narrow if you go from curb to, to the backside of the property.
From what I'm hearing, it might be better for you that they do build it, because with those driveways there, there's not going to be enough room for those long trucks to park there across the street from you anymore. They won't be able to, because the driveways are right next to each other like that, and they can't park in front of a driveway.
Absolutely, but like Finchley Street that's there, that's the corner of our property, so there's a long area where there's two-hundred, maybe a hundred-and-fifty feet, so that's where the, usually the tour bus parks down that side street there. Maybe putting a four-foot red zone in between there, we'll, we'll break it up there, and you're right, may break up the ones being on Dart themselves, but there are some other areas that go around Finchley, that there's large curb areas, that there's no driveways. So.
Okay.
Mr. Roscoe, thank you, thank you very much for coming and addressing us and, and for bringing up this last point that you brought up. So it's something that I've been a little vocal about. I know that a few months back, and, and when, when Amy was here, I, I addressed it, and I knew that it, she had presented it before, and it wasn't able to go anywhere. But looking at the possibility, and I, I don't know, in our capacities of planning commission, if there's any way to recommend or even go forward with it, but because I am surrounded by apartments as well, and, you know, these cars are just like taking up all the parking, at looking at somehow, like, looking at high-density apartment areas and implementing a street permit parking, so, I mean, I don't know if that's a solution, and maybe that's why I'm just offering to look into it and not necessarily implement it, but, you know, if, if the residents of that street are given priority to buy or to get, to be issued a permit to park on that street, like, I mean, I, I can't even imagine why a parking permit would be issued to somebody like in a neighboring apartment complex, right? So like, you give priority to the residents of the street, and I, I think that's, I mean, it's something that we need to explore and look into, and I, I, I don't know if there's anything in our capacities, planning commission, to, to somehow, like, implement or start a study or something, but, but I think that's a common theme throughout the whole city, that these apartment comp, people, residents of these apartment complexes aren't willing to pay whatever the apartment complex is charging to park their car in the complex, and instead, they, they, they park on the street, and I, I believe that's counterintuitive to the, like, general plan at the city. So, I mean, that's just my suggestion, or like, my, my idea. I'm not sure that it can go anywhere, but, but I'd like to look into it eventually.
The planning commission doesn't have jurisdiction over parking issues, however, it is within your, your capacity to ask staff to take a look at it and do a, a five-page report or something to that effect. And then, then, then you can formally present it to city council. So that is within your purview.
So if it is possible, and I imagine that I need the approval of-
Of the, of the, of the planning commission, right. And I would suggest that you bring it up during commission comments. Because right now, we're on this particular, right.
Thank you.
Okay. So it'll be brought up towards the end. All right. Seeing that there's no more public interest, we now close public communication, and is there a motion?
I move to approve the, the request.
I'll second it.
Is that with the condition that the CCNRs include a requirement that cars be parked in the garages and not used for storage?
Yes.
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 The maker of the motion agrees to?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. I believe that's the last one, so we have staff communications, correct?
Sir, sir, real quick, I'd like to apologize to the planning commission and to the neighbors about the condition of that property. I was not aware of it. It'll get fixed tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. The new owner, the new owner. All right. Staff communications.
Is there anything from staff?
No items.
No items. So you can bring it back to commission comments?
Staff and commission, I'd like the approval to direct staff to study the possibility of- of, of implementing permit parking.
To present to the city council.
Commissioner Sands, I think that's such a, a great point that you brought up because this is gonna be a growing concern. We're gonna keep, you know, talking about this issue going forward, you know, with, with new construction and new, new building and permits, parking's always gonna be a problem. You know, it's come up years before. It's gonna, it comes up today and it's gonna come up in the future. So, I think it's great that we have staff to, to look into it and get us going in that direction.
Thank you.
All right, so there's been a motion being made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So, if you could please do a report on that and get back to us.
Yes, we'll be actually working with the director of public works, Sam Gutierrez, to look into that. I do believe there are certain areas in the city that have some sort of permit parking, like areas around Kaiser, I think, off of Judith, I think it's Bass. Those communities there have some sort of a permitted parking type thing.
Big Dalton.
Yeah, I, there's, there's like two or three locations that have it, but the, the enforcement part of it is what they've expressed being the concern, you know, you know, the fact that the staff levels and all that and, and the enforcement of that specifically. But we will go ahead and make note of that and discuss it with the director of public works.
I just have a question real quick before we adjourn. Is there a limit to how many cars per resident per, can have at the residence? Or is it?
No, we cannot regulate how many people, how many cars a, a house can, you know, a household can own. There's no way we can regulate that.
All right, thank you. That's just a question in the back of my head.
Council, I have, I have a question or maybe for staff and I'm not sure who can answer it. So, I know that, so we've been speaking and I know that our last meeting, we spoke about the, I don't have the name of the fee, but the fee that the cannabis applicants are paying yearly, or is it yearly for police, police, anything fee?
It was $50,000.
Yes, $50,000. So, does that, does that fee have to use, be used? Because I know that it's supposed to be earmarked or it's earmarked for the police department, but does it have to be used strictly on anything like cannabis regulation? Like if, let's, you know, we're increasing the police budget, if we somehow propose and certainly it's not our jurisdiction, but, I mean, they could possibly hire, you know, another code enforcement officer because I think code enforcement does fall under the purview of the police department to help regulate if the permit process isn't self-sustainable. I mean, I, ideally, the permit process would, would be self-sustainable so that we could at least pay for one, one code enforcement officer with, you know, the, hopefully minimal fee. But that's just my thought. Like if, if we're getting this increased revenue, it wouldn't be a stretch to ask for an additional code enforcement officer if the concern is that we don't have enough code enforcement officers to enforce codes. So, I just, I guess my question is, can, is, would it be possible legally to have these funds used to pay for a code enforcement officer?
It's, it's my understanding that the, it's all within the city council's purview. So, if, if you want to write them a letter from the commission saying, would you please consider using this $50,000 for an additional code enforcement officer? You could do that and it would be transmitted to the, the mayor and council members.
Well, I think right now, it's premature, but once we, we see the, once we see the report, maybe it's possible. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wanna say I like your idea on that science. I'm all for that, having a, an additional code enforcement. I had a quick question in regards to code enforcement. There's a code enforcement for building and safety here in, in the city and then the one we're talking about is actual officer that's enforcing parking and whatnot, right?
Right, there, there's, I believe there's limited staff for parking enforcement specifically. If you're not aware, they're going to be starting some enforcement in our parking structure here at city hall and parking enforcement has already warned staff about where to park. So, we do, we are aware that there is parking enforcement. Now, I don't know if you meant code enforcement as in terms of parking enforcement versus code enforcement, because code enforcement generally enforce zoning and municipal code.
Thank you.
All right, any more comments or questions by the commissioners?
Only one concern that I had and I was asking council about the recommendation that we made on last meeting with Mr. Sean Bruszczyk.
Bruszczyk.
Bruszczyk, that he would have armed guards inside and outside of his facility. And I wanted to make sure that that was added in to the recommendation for our city council members.
As I indicated, we will do that. I had understood that Gus had done it, but since he's not here, I will talk to Mr. Andre Dupree about it, communicating this to the city council.
Awesome. Thank you, council.
All right. Any more questions or comments?
Just comments. Thank you very much, staff, for all the hard work. Appreciate it.
Yes, I know, I know it's been very rough on you with all the changes over the last couple of months. You guys are probably being run ragged. So, thank you guys for all your hard work and hopefully, everything's gonna work out good and we'll keep on going down the road. So.
I'd like to welcome aboard Mr. Andre and Mr. Luis.
Welcome, guys. And all right, I guess this meeting is adjourned. Oh, motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.